I hereby reconvene the May 27, 2014 Meeting of the Marion County School Board at 6:05. Good evening. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your cellphone or put them on vibrate. Dr. Apsher, Supervisor of Alternative Program, please introduce the individuals who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening. Dr. Apsher. Okay, Ms. Murphy is replacing Ms. Apsher.
Superintendent Mr. Timon, Chairman Mr. James, School Board members, it is indeed an honor to be able to introduce to you this evening the inspirational speaker. I could begin this introduction with telling you all of her accolades. For instance, she was recently recognized as the State of Florida Department of Juvenile Justice Teacher of the Year finalist. But that really doesn't matter to her. What really matters to her is that she makes a difference each day in the lives of her students. How can you tell she impacts her students? Well, one of her students states, "I like Mrs. Wade because she has patience and she is eager to see us succeed. She motivates me to try hard at everything I do." Another student shared that Mrs. Wade is an expiring teacher because she always pushes you to do better even when you feel like giving up. You know, some people are born to lead, some people are born to dance. Well, tonight's inspirational teacher is born to reach and teach. It is with great pleasure that I introduce to some and present to others Mrs. Dale Wade.
Good evening. I guess we'll begin with the pledge. That's protocol.
Oh, you, Miss Wade.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now, a few words that I hope you'll find inspirational. We've all heard the saying that the world is your oyster. But when we look around at some of our students, it's evident from the start that the world may not be their oyster. For many, we are most of their world, we are their oyster. And on some days, they're our little piece of sand, our little irritant. But an oyster's pearl begins its life as a problem, like a parasite or a little piece of shell that accidentally lodges itself in the oyster's body. And to ease the irritant, the oyster resorts to defensive action. He calls on a deeper inner power and eventually begins to secrete a smooth, hard substance around the irritant. And as long as the aggravation remains within the body, the oyster will continue to engulf it layer upon layer. And over time, the irritant becomes not an irritant at all, but a beautiful pearl. As we near the end of the school year and contemplate the next, I urge everyone to call on their inner oyster. Know that the creativity, the persistence, the imagination, the perseverance to solve any problem lies within. Your pearl is just a layer away. Enjoy the shine.
Just stand there for just a minute. Guys, if you have not been to Ms. Wade's class, you need to go. Okay, little small lady, all those guys, and she will give you a true meaning of the word "uniform" because all of the kids are in uniform. I had an opportunity to go out to her class and be part of her celebration. And the young men that she was working with had the utmost respect, and they just loved to go to her class. And for me, being an old person that hang out and see all these kids, we call them outlaws sometimes, but they were not an outlaw in your-- they are not outlaws in your class.
Thank you.
And this is the beauty of it. She had kids from all over the state that's in there. And when they get to her class, they know who's in charge. And she did it with a smile, and they know that she love them. Ms. Wade, it was indeed a pleasure to be out there with you and celebrate your award. And Ms. Murphy, once again, it was a beautiful job, and those kids really respect this teacher. Guys, let's give her a round of applause.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
I look forward to coming out to visit your class.
I'd love to. Thank you.
You gotta have an appointment.
I'll make an appointment.
Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the agenda for the May 27, 2014 School Board Meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, the audio recording and DVD included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation? May I have a motion and a second?
Send it. Second.
It is moved by Ms. Ely, second by Ms. Borton. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the April 17, 2014 Administrative Briefing and Work Session and the April 22, 2014 School Board Meeting? May I have a motion and a second?
Send it. Second.
It was moved by Ms. Ely, second by Ms. Borton. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. The motion passed 5-0. Ms. Judy Sannetti, Public Education Foundation Officer, please come forward for a business partner recognition.
Ms. Shealy's gonna do that.
Ms. Shealy, boy, I'm getting--
Mrs. Sannetti, good evening, Board. Good evening, Chairman James. Mrs. Sannetti was not able to be here tonight, so I have the pleasure of introducing our wonderful principal at Ward Highlands Elementary, Mrs. Melissa Keiner. And she is going to explain about her business partner who was not able to be here as well. But we want to recognize them, okay?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Ward Highlands is very excited and privileged to have Lee's Chicken, Mr. and Mrs. Stillwell, on board as our school business partner for Ward Highlands. We're very excited. They had an emergency. They just have flown back from the airport from something with their son, so she apologized profusely for not being here tonight. However, Ward Highlands is very excited to have Mr. and Mrs. Stillwell on board. And some of you may know their son, Nick Stillwell, from his foundation. But we're excited to have Lee's Chicken as our business partner, and we look forward to working with them for many years to come. So, thank you.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
Send it.
It's moved by Ms. Borton, second by Ms. Ely. All in favor signify by saying aye. The motion is approved 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the real estate options of purchase agreement for three future school sites, which is located in the northeast and the southeast and the southeast section of Marion Oaks subdivision? May I have a motion and a second?
Send it. Second.
It's moved by Mr. Crawford, second by Mrs. Ely. Are there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. May I have a motion to approve the following donations? $1,131 to Bellevue High School from Bellevue High School ROTC Booster Club; $1,000 to Bellevue High School from the Rotary Club of Bellevue; $1,000 to H Street Elementary School from H Street Elementary School PTO; $2,500 to H Street Elementary School from their business partner, St. Leo University, via the Public Education Foundation; $1,000 to Emory Shores Elementary School from Lockheed Martin; $1,000 to Forest High School from the Institute of Cardiovascular Excellence, PLLC; $26,089.21 to North Marion High School from Pepsi Bottling Group; $2,000 to Osceola Middle School from Dr. Richards, Elise Wood; and $3,000 to Vanguard High School from the Veterinary Hospital, PL. May I have a motion and a second?
Send it. That's okay. Second.
It was a motion by Mrs. Ely, second by Mrs. Borton. All in favor signify by saying aye. Okay. I think it's-- is it Ms. Ely or Ms. Borton's turn?
It's amazing to see that our community supports our schools so much. $38,720 since our last School Board Meeting and our last donation. We appreciate so much you supporting our schools and seeing the needs that our public schools have. I just wonder, Pepsi Bottling Company, $26,000, does that include some Pepsi? Or that's a lot of money for one school. But I appreciate, we all appreciate so much your support, and we look forward to see your continued support in our school system. Thank you.
George, I know this is one of those things. When I see $26,000, you don't have nothing to say. Tell me.
I'm happy to say that what has transpired here is that Pepsi Bottling Company does serve the North Marion community, North Marion High School community. There was a miscalculation that has been made for a number of years on the commission that the school was going to receive. Pepsi Bottling recognized that and recognized that they should have been paid a higher commission, so they went back in their coffers one, two, or three years, and now they're making up the difference, and now they're on the right commission scale, so to speak. So, we do appreciate Pepsi doing that. We appreciate the folks at North Marion for catching that mistake.
Yeah.
And of course, the benefit will be to the students at North Marion High School.
Absolutely.
I just thought we had to say something.
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of money.
It is a lot, yeah.
Board direction, a nun. Meeting reminder, there's a special work session scheduled for Wednesday, May 28, 2014, at 9:00 p.m. The purpose of the work session is to review the hiring process for an in-house legal staff and is expected to last until 5:00. An employment termination hearing is scheduled for Thursday, May 29, 2014, at 1:00. The next Administrative Briefing and Work Session is scheduled for Thursday, June 5, 2014, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to review the teacher evaluation protocol. Board members, concerns. We'll start with Ms. Ely.
I always have some things to talk about. First, I'd like to commend Reddick Elementary and Oak Crest Elementary, principals, parents, SAC members, for approving uniforms for your students for next year. That you're going to see a total difference in their whole persona, especially the discipline. And I hope to see more schools, especially the elementary schools, looking for uniforms in the future. As a grandparent of some children in uniforms, it is absolutely much cheaper to keep your kids in uniforms than it is to wear all the clothes, the best style clothes. And the uniforms are great, just khaki pants or navy and just a plain shirt. So, teachers, parents, SAC members of other schools, please look into uniforms for next year and the future. And I'll be glad to come out and give my support to you in any way I can. Secondly, I wanted to-- Ms. Borton and I went to the Evening of Excellence. Marion County had this at MTI last week where various organizations and clubs in Marion County gave $100-- let's see, $150,000 worth of college scholarships to a little over 100 of our students in Marion County. This is separate from Bright Futures. This is just local clubs and organizations. And Ms. Borton and I were honored to give some of those scholarships out. So, go for whatever university you're going to, students. I had seven Gators I was honoring. But we look forward to hearing all about you when you go to college. And I think that's pretty much it. I understand we got some PICO funds from the state, but it's not much. We used to get $1,500,000. We are getting some funds back this year. It's $800,000, and I think that's better than nothing.
Ms. Borton.
I just want to follow up on what Ms. Ely was saying. Reddick, Colia, and Oak Crest, congratulations on going for school uniforms. I think that's an awesome idea. And also, I want to tell you, Reddick, Colia had an art and science show. I wasn't able to attend the actual dates, but Ms. Denmark, who's the art teacher, and Ms. Dicky made arrangements for me to be able to go the next day. And when I went in, I was astounded at how wonderful the artwork was. And what really impressed me was one of their problem students that they had, the artwork that he compiled together. It really shows you what art can do to a student. It really emphasized it so much that I just wanted to bring that up. And the Evening of Excellence, it was such a wonderful event. I think the highlight of it was when Ms. Ely brought out those Gator caps and topped it off.
I had to do that, Ms. Borton.
I thought it was wonderful.
I can't get the scholarship without a Gator cap.
Yeah. It was just wonderful. That's all I have, sir.
Okay. Mr. Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, and this is really more directed towards the superintendent, and I know that you saw the test results, just like we did. And I believe you all probably get more information that we can actually pull off the state website to get further data on it. You know, I'm really very, very concerned about our test results. If you look at what happened in this county, and I know you can have all the arguments you want about, you don't like the test, the test's not fair, you know, whatever it may be, people were having a bad day when they took the test. The point is, is that we did not do well, and other counties did. 29 counties in this state scored above the state average. In fact, one county that just blew me out of the water because they're like a poster boy for all the reasons why we give, why students can't succeed in school, and that's Gadsden County. Gadsden County's one of the poorest counties in the state of Florida. It's the only majority-minority county in the state, and they scored at the top of the heap. Only 27% of their students couldn't meet the state minimum passing on, was it the, it was on the math test. If you look at ours, if you combine both the reading and the math, we only had five schools in our county that were, had a less of a failure rate. If you look at 1 and 2 in that area than the state average. And so, I'm concerned. I hope that you're putting some game plans together to address that because I'm very concerned that we're going to lose these children. This is the third grade. And that if we don't correct it, and we may have given an impossible burden to the teachers that are going to be getting them in the fourth grade in trying to turn this around. So, let me make a suggestion. Why don't we get in the schools that did, and let's just try to control the cost on it, and then we can look and see how successful it was and maybe move it up into some of the other schools. But let's take a look at those schools that scored the absolute worst, like Evergreen. 73% of the students there scored a 1 and a 2. You know, we've got Reddick, Colia, 71, Oak Crest, 67, Wyamina, 67. Let's take some of those schools. Let's find some money somewhere in the budget. Staff Development would be a great place because it didn't have a big impact on all the money we spent this year. That's just my opinion. But let's find some money there. Bring these teachers, the second, the third, and the fourth grade teachers, back in. Let them go through these students and try to figure out what went wrong. And see if they can't come up with some strategies that they can give to these fourth grade teachers so that they can address these children's problems. Because we're getting a new test next year, but it doesn't matter what test it is. This one showed that the overwhelming majority of the students in a lot of our schools just can't read at the state level, and they cannot do math. And that concerns me. I didn't even look at the writing test because I do have some problems with that. We've had some problems in the past with that, especially on the scoring because it's a subjective scoring. You have somebody that gets, I forget, is it 15 seconds or 30 seconds that they get to scan that and make a judgment call. But these other tests, yeah, maybe it is fill-in-the-blank, maybe it is bubble, whatever it may be. But we've got to do something because if we lose them this next year, we're never going to get it back. We're going to spend the next eight years after that trying to find a way to make sure these students can read and so that they can finally pass, was it, Florida State Assessment, the new test. And so, and I'm not trying to cast blame, but I went through this data, and when I saw some of the counties that did so much better than we did, we're at the bottom of the heap of all the counties around us. And that frightens me. But I don't want to throw any stones. What I want to do is I want to use our collective brains and try to figure out some strategies that the people, or the fourth grade teachers, and they're going to be the, hopefully, the beneficiary of this, that they're going to develop to make sure that the fourth grade is the turnaround here. Yeah, go ahead.
And I'd just, and thank you for your comments. And yes, we've already begun the analysis of these scores, and those are only partial scores, as you've already mentioned. We also have 4th through 10th grade scores and all of our other schools coming in, and also end-of-course exams that will be part of this. We will have a final report for you when we get all of that data in. Not only do we need to find out what went wrong, Mr. Crawford, but we're busily trying to find out what went right at those schools who did do well. And there were some of those also. To say that I am pleased and excited and happy with these scores, absolutely not. I'm very disappointed in them personally, and personally, as a superintendent of the school district, I'm disappointed that they weren't hiring. And I think I'd be disappointed if we didn't have all of our children being successful at the highest level that they possibly could be successful at. So, we are already beginning to work on that. We will bring you periodic progress reports on what we are doing to help remedy that situation. And again, I appreciate your comments tonight.
Well, and I'm glad to hear that because it's just, it just frightens me when I see like, something like this. And like I said, I know we're getting a new test next year, and maybe that, you know, everybody will just ace that one. But that's not going to happen, and if we don't do something, we're going to have another problem, starting with the fourth grade, with these children. Board, one other thing. After our work session on Thursday, when we were talking about our insurance coverage for our property, I started thinking if there was a way that we could possibly lower the premium that we are paying. And I wonder if it wouldn't be possible for us to take out of the mix of the schools that we are covering, all the new ones that we've built? Because remember, we've spent a great deal of money, by state requirement, to hurricane harden those schools. We should not have roofs being ripped off, and we should not have, unless we have a catastrophic storm come through this county. But we should not have the problem on those schools as we would have at a, you know, an H Street, an Osceola, a Wyamina, some of these other schools that were built, you know, 30, 40 years ago. So, I wonder if it wouldn't be possible for us to take out the Liberties, the Horizons, the--
The United School.
Yes, and all the ones that we have. And I'm not sure whether we started, whether Hurricanes and Harding started, the mandate from the state, when we built Westport or not. But I know it's been, you know, since that point. And I just think we should, we could, you know, and, you know, maybe it's a few dollars here and a few dollars there because it all means its money goes back to the bottom line that we can use someplace else. So, that's my two thoughts for the evening.
Again, if I could address that. One thought also. If you'll recall, Mr. Few shared with us last week at that work session that we had a private firm come in here and do a full assessment of all of our campuses. But we can, so that reduced rate that we received word on last week was a result of that building by building. It did compare the old schools with the new schools. But we can certainly ask your question, and I will do that tomorrow.
Because if they've looked at all of them, I guarantee you that they have put a certain amount in there for, to cover all the campuses. So, if we can somehow, and then we may not be, we may have the best deal that's available to us. And I know we have a great rate in comparison to other counties where our coverage kicks in on a county-wide cost basis where other counties, they didn't do as good a job in negotiating, and theirs is by school, which means that they're going to be on the hook for a lot more if they've had multiple damage. But it was just, it's just something, you know, you know, $10, $15,000, $100,000 here and there is, you know, is real money.
We'll get some more information for you. Thank you.
Ms. Stacy.
Okay. Mr. Crawford, once again, we're on the same page. I contacted Mr. Langford this morning regarding the FCAT scores, and common sense shows me that our math scores, you know, they're kind of hanging, they're kind of hanging on their own. It's the reading scores that are dropping. These are the same brains and the same children that are, you know, doing better on math, which seems like that would be the hardest.
Different part of the brain.
But they're not doing, but we don't have a whole district of people who have bad reading brains when other districts are doing well on both. Something's going haywire with our reading, what we're doing. And so, I've asked Mr. Langford to please track back, go back maybe five or six years, find kids that were in reading remediation in the fourth grade, check them in fifth grade, see if that child's name still shows up on the fifth grade list, the sixth grade list, and find out if children ever graduate remediation. If they don't graduate remediation, I wonder why we're doing it. We could be spending our money on something that's working. But I want to know the percentage, and Mr. Langford's very, very helpful. He was, he was going over the data himself, and he is welcoming board members, I believe, to come in with any ideas that we may have from, that we may have pulled, you know, the things that we're reading and we're looking into. And he and I are talking strongly right now about libraries and the difference in the way things are now and the way things were, where the children don't really get exposed to the library like they did many, many years ago. And if we're giving them books to read that are from the 1970s sports heroes, their fathers weren't alive, and therefore, they don't even recognize the names. But he's been most helpful, and I'm looking forward to that information from Mr. Langford. Now, in my snail mail letters that I sent out a couple of months ago, teachers share, I'm not really surprised about our FCAT scores, Mr. Crawford. I've got teachers across the districts that have been telling me this in writing for two months that this is going to happen. Teachers aren't surprised. You know, we put 30% more students in a classroom, took out their assistant, and we're basically, the teachers are paying for that mistake through their evaluations right now. And so, therefore, the teachers aren't surprised. And so, therefore, the teachers aren't surprised. I was in a kindergarten class with 30% more children than this teacher was used to having. And honestly, if I was suicidal-type person, I would slit my wrist in there, because she had her hands totally full. And it, our, the unintended consequence of the giving the teachers 30% more students and taking their parent away all the same year is basically coming down now on the teachers' backs, where they're going to be paying for this mistake in their evaluations. Now, in reading all of the survey, the things that I've gotten back from the teachers, I'm up to about 350 responses now, it's been most interesting. I have been following, tracking trends of the different things that the different teachers were talking about, and as usual, I had 5% of the teachers that liked the status quo. They're very intimidated by the fact that I wanted to address the status quo, because I think some people just get something out of failure. I don't understand it, but they get something out of it. So, but 95% of my responses have been great from the teachers. They've given me some wonderful things. One comment, though, that came from the teachers, they said, you know, well, they talk about the electronic survey, but yet, we don't ever find out exactly how the surveys turned out. So, thanks to the teachers, Mr. Tomlin, I requested the electronic survey results. And what I found out was that I didn't need to stay up and burn the midnight oil till midnight and 2:00 in the morning, talking with teachers and reading teachers' emails and trying to sort data. We already had it. What I came up with, what I found out in my surveys, is exactly what we already knew. And I've kind of highlighted some of the main ones. This is our own electronic survey that has been put on a dusty shelf somewhere, because had these things been addressed, I probably would not have needed to send out my email. In fact, I had one administrator that's retired, and she sent me an email and said, "I hope you've changed your opinion about emailing the parents," I mean, emailing the teachers. And I said, "The only thing I've changed my opinion on is that I should have done it last year. I waited a year too long to do it." But question number 18 on your survey from last year, I haven't gotten the results from this year's yet, but last year, it was, "I feel free to express..." This is the reason I did the survey, folks, because of what teachers were telling me about the morale in the school system. This is why I did it. On our survey, "I feel free to express my professional opinions at my school." I added the agrees and the strongly agrees. I added the disagrees and the strongly agrees. Of all the teachers that answered this, and there's quite a few hundred, maybe 700, approximately 30% of the teachers on our own survey disagreed that they can share their professional opinions. So, when y'all were calling me, acting like I'm an alien with three heads, Mr. James, for doing this, your own information that you had on the shelf said exactly what I've been saying for a year. I feel valued at my school. Of the agree, there were 319 that agreed, and then some, 246 strongly disagree. But when you add the percentages of the disagree, strongly disagree, and the agree and strongly disagree, nearly one-fourth feel that they're not valued at their school. On your survey, "The school's administration consistently and fairly enforces the code of student conduct." Now, how many times have we been talking about student conduct since I've been on the board, because that's one of my hot topics? A fifth of the teachers do not agree that the school's administration consistently and fairly enforces the code of student conduct. What else do we have here? I shared with you I would do this. "The school administration plans quality, school-based, professional development activities for me." 17% of the teachers disagree with that. On your surveys, let me see. "I receive follow-up support to assist me with implementation of activities I learn in professional development." 30% of the teachers disagree. They don't believe they get that support. So, now, we need to address why, you know, we've come to this day where now the teachers, it's all falling back on the teachers' backs again. The teachers have been warning us. I don't understand why this hasn't come before the board, this electronic survey. And this is not even, and this is the braver people that answered this. The ones that are timid didn't even go on the electronic survey, because they feared that they might be tracked back. So, this is the braver people. There's a whole lot more out there. So, I think I'll rest my case on that tonight. And, Mr. James, you've been talking, honestly, you know, the subliminal messages you give at the end of every board meeting, where you want, you know, we have a board member that doesn't want to be on our team. I just can't follow a team off a cliff like a lemon. I guess you might call me a free agent. When we decide to pull this district together and have a winning district, this free agent will get on your team, Mr. James. Thank you.
Ms. Ely, you have something you want to say.
Yeah, I had some comments I wanted to make about the FCAT scores this year, Mr. Crawford. I've been a first- and second-grade teacher for 13 years, and I want to tell you, even though the state has a required mandate retention in third grade, that is way too late for children to be retained. If they need to learn to read in kindergarten and first grade, and if they don't, they need to be retained then, and they won't be retained in third grade. I don't care what the state research says about that. I'm telling you, because I've been a teacher and a principal, and children need to learn to read. I've polled several schools, thank you, I've polled several school principals and teachers in third grade, and these kids are coming into third grade, they can't learn to read. No remediation program is going to help them learn to read. They need that gift of time, another year in school. I have two grandchildren that are doing very well. They were retained in first grade, and that's where it needs to happen, not third grade. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ely. That's what I'm hearing, too.
Ms. Morris.
Miranda. Ms. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have all spoken a great deal about the importance of our students being involved in athletic programs and extracurricular activities, and I have a very good report to give you tonight. You know that our high schools are members of the Florida High School Athletic Association, and a number of years ago, that particular association also began tracking the academic success of those students, as well as just wins and losses in district playoff games and things like that. And I'm very happy and pleased to recognize two schools tonight. Vanguard High School, this is the overall, all-sport combination of grade-point averages of student athletes. Vanguard High School placed second in the entire state of Florida in the classification of 6A, which is one of the larger classifications, and they were actually surpassed by Forest High School, who came in number one in all of 6A in the entire state. That's all-sport programs combined. I'm sharing with you that I am, and I'm sure you are too, very proud of those particular schools. We also heard, the second thing I'll share with you, we heard earlier, we see a list of wonderful donors, and if you want to see a good donor in action, you may remember or recall that our local Honda dealership also likes to reward and award and recognize good attendance. We know that good attendance is important for on-the-job and things like that. So, a number of years ago, at least, and I know for this year, this might be the second year we've done this, for seniors in high school, Honda, the local Honda dealer is recognizing students who had perfect attendance at all of our schools. This is during the senior year only, not their entire career, but during their senior year. And it's tough for a senior to go to school every day of the year. I'll share that with you. Tomorrow night, each of our schools will have, there will be seven high schools in which Honda will draw one name of a perfect-attended senior out, and that student will receive an iPad. So, there's iPads for those students, and then all those names will be combined, and then one student from the entire county will be given a Honda car, a brand-new Honda automobile. So, that's a pretty substantial contribution from another business entity in our community. I'm very proud of them for doing it. And I'm also proud of all those students, I don't know how many there are, who happen to have perfect attendance. And then, I want to share one more thing with you. Sunday's newspaper, the editorial, not the news, but the editorial, Brad Rogers wrote an editorial, "On My Mind," I believe was the title of that, and he was restating some issues that had occurred between our local city council and a private enterprise that was attempting to lease some cabling opportunities for them, and the city council rejected that. And the article in the newspaper erroneously, erroneously stated that this would cost the Marion County school system $2 million more. That's inaccurate. It will not cost us that much. We went, according to E-Rate regulations, with the low bidder. If the low bidder can provide, however that service provider attempts to do that, either through the city or through some other way, then we will use that low bidder. If not, we have the backup plan. The plan is that we would use our current provider. It will be a little more expensive, but not in the neighborhood of anywhere near $2 million. And I was a little disappointed that it was reported that way. Our folks do pretty good due diligence in trying to strike the best deals for us, and I'm very proud of our IT department and Mr. Gregory's entire operations side. And I just wanted to put that little bug out there. We'll give you some more information as it comes upon us. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Superintendent. You know, when my name is called, I usually try and put it in perspective, but my name was called tonight. There's several things that I want all of us to understand about what we do. We are a huge school system. And when I say a huge school system, we're probably right there with the Scamier and some of the other ones, with right around $42,000. We cannot have people going out there, getting information that they already have, that they already have, because this is the point I was trying to share with all of you. That's information that we had. All we had to do was to walk over there and say, "Hey, show me the information that we have." We don't have to create a fiction where we're fighting over anything, because the whole purpose in all of this information is to do something with it. When we have one group over here, and I know some of you have not worked in large high schools or in school districts, when you have one group over here telling you one thing, you've got another group in the building telling you another thing, and you can get anything you want if you asked. Okay, the purpose in that information there was for us to have it, and we can do something with it. The purpose at this point in time, now that we have the information and we've got people to finally look at what we have, where we didn't have to create this syndrome where everybody is out there fighting against one another. My whole point was to make sure that we work together. Now, I am sitting here, listening at all of you, being so disappointed that our scores are down. Guys, y'all had to know that was coming, because of some of the moves that we have made in the past. We had to know this, because when you start doing all these things, and you take the experience out and move them around, you've got to have this type of thing that's coming. Now, the question is, what do we do about it? And this is what we have to decide. We got that information, we got it electronically, we got it, whatever you got, you got it from your group, whatever, it's what we do with it now. So, if you pull my chain, and you really want to know what I'm talking about, that's what I'm talking about. We didn't have to break down the tree to get what we already had.
Except, we didn't know we had it.
You didn't know we had it.
I do now, and you didn't know we had it either.
Lady, I, you know, sometimes when I do things, people, I have to, because I'm chair, and I know, after I was doing it for so many years, I know we had that information. That's where I am, and I just hope each and every one of you understand, in order for us to move in the right direction, all of us have to be pulling and rowing in the same direction. And when I send things out to our staff, or when I send something out in response to what you're saying, I knew one thing. You've got one group on this side of the building that's going to tell you one thing, and you've got another group on that side. And in all actuality, we had that information all the time. That's what I'm saying. Thank you. Let's move on. Before addressing expulsions, may I, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received an alternative placement list for our students through May 9, 2014. Are there any parents in the audience who wish to speak on behalf of a student regarding a disciplinary matter? Seeing none. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD-14-90E, JD-14-91, JD-14-92, JD-14-93, JD-14-94, JD-14-95, JD-14-96, JD-14-97, JD-14-98, JD-14-100E, and JD-14-101, with educational service through the 2014-2015 school year? May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
The motion by Mrs. Ely, second by Mrs. Boynton. Are there any questions, any discussions? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn? May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Ely, second by Mrs. Boynton. The meeting, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.